This is how we call the meeting, the order. I could...
Our most gracious fellow headmen, we thank this day, I think all the ones who come out to commission business this time, as you place these commissions, and they make decisions that affect the entire county. Christ.
... Just to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible to all.
Are we ready? At this time, I would like to ask anyone in the audience, do you have anything towards our Cassino General? I have nothing from the audience, I want to ask the board, can I get a motion to pass to Cassino General?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Mr. Mike Daniels.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull page thirty-five.
Page thirty-five. Is that something you want to address now?
It's just some discussion that I'd like to have before we pass it, we can do it now if you'd like.
You need a second for discussion?
Yes.
I'll second for discussion.
Got a second by Mr. Yeager for discussion.
Okay, I just wanted to ask about, I know we're going to go out for bid on the insurance companies, and my question is about the contract with the consultant. I, it seems to me that the method of payment, the method of compensation to consultants have changed under Obamacare, is that the case legally?
Commissioner, I don't know in terms of the structure of the payment, I know the contract we have pre-existing with combined insurance services is on a monthly basis, and subject to three years of annual renewal. And this is the second of those three years that they voted last week, or the week prior to renew him under that, but I'm not familiar with the Obamacare payment structure for the agent of record.
Okay, so you're saying that we're in the second year of a three-year?
I recall, it's either the second, or it's the third year, under a three-year, one-year renewable contract.
Okay, and what percentage of our premium is the consultant fee, do you know?
I don't.
We changed at the direction of the board about two and a half years ago, from the insurance company that we chose paying the consultant, to the board paying a flat fee. So it is a flat fee, no matter what, so it's really not a percentage, it's a flat fee, and then the insurance company pays no compensation to our agent now, whereas in the past they did.
Best I recall, it was, and the reason that we did that is we wanted an independent agent to work for us, so to speak, instead of we felt like that he was working for the insurance company.
Right, and I understand that, I guess my question is, if, I know we're not paying based on a percentage of the premium, but if you did the math, do you know roughly what our, I guess our consultant fee is almost twenty thousand, just under twenty thousand a year? And what our annual premium is, if you did the math, what would be the percentage roughly of that premium? And what's the industry standard?
Yeah.
I would say it's about a million dollars, so, just doing rough, rough numbers, maybe if you had a three percent commission there.
And do you know, is that kind of standard in the industry?
I, not really, I wouldn't, I don't, I don't know that.
Okay, so when we're, when we've decided, I know that the committee has recommended that we go out for bid, have you discussed going out for bid regarding the consultant as well?
We did, well, and what, the insurance committee is made up of about fourteen or so staff members, constitutional officers, and when they voted to renew, when they come up to renew, the agent of record agreement, it was a unanimous decision to move forward to renew that.
Is there, was it based on anything specific, or just that you were comfortable with the agent of record?
Yeah, I think everybody's pretty well comfortable with him, he does a great job for us, I know numerous, I mean, I have a direct contact with him, I talk to him probably almost every day, or every other day, and he gives staff members numbers to contact him directly on issues such as claims and things like that, it's, I mean, he's, and he was here before I was here, and I, when I come on board, jumped right in, and he does a great job for us.
Okay, well that was my question as why we weren't going out for bid on the consultant contract as well, clearly, the current agent of record could bid on the consultant contract, but it seemed that if we were going to go out for bid, it would, to me it would make sense to go out for bid on the consultant contract as well.
Okay.
Is this?
You know, as far as me, I think when you have a unanimous decision by the, by the insurance committee that's made up of the majority of the constitutional officers and staff, I would, I would think we'd just go with the insurance recommendation, plus we have that, I mean that's in the contract.
If I can, just going back to two summers ago, there was a discussion also at the time amongst the commission about the percentages of what the commission rates were, I think there were presentations before Brett, but I think it was somewhere between around four percent of the dispute and the discussion at the time, back in July of 2011, that four percent that was being paid in relation to the less than two percent being paid now, that's fixed in the current contract that we have, so in terms of the actual price, the eighteen thousand dollars or so is what's being paid on an annual basis, and it was a commission's request, going back to that, when we structured an agent of record contract, that he would be subject to the committee's first evaluation, a hundred and eighty days, a hundred and twenty days prior to this commission's renewal, and after the committee recommended, it would come back to this commission on an annual basis for you all to ratify what your committee had recommended, and that's, I think, transpired a week and a half ago, as the committee recommended it to you all now, you have the ability to renew his contract, it's either the second or the third year within that original contract that he has the ability to renew, subject to your commission's approval.
And does the term run from October?
It's October to October, and that's why we start it now in the spring, so you can ratify it, so that your agent of record then has the ability, you saw the other recommendations to go out for RFP for dental and healthcare, that that agent of record then has the ability for four or five months to work for the county and get going, but at least they know where they stand going into the summer and putting those bids out for you all.
Mr. Chairman, being the commissioner on the insurance committee, as it was previously stated, it was a unanimous vote, that we retain our agent of record, unanimous vote on the insurance committee, so.
My second will stand to approve the agenda with that included.
And, you know, I wanted to ask the questions and put the discussion on the floor, there's a lot of changes going on in healthcare with Obamacare, and we will be seeing changes continually coming up, and I think it's something that we have a responsibility to discuss and let the public hear how we're handling it, so I appreciate the discussion.
True, this morning I was watching the news, and anyway, they don't know where they're going, it said the rates may go as high as three hundred percent, and especially on the pharmaceutical side, Congress of the United States don't even know where it's going, but anyway, there would be some changes, starting, I think it's in fourteen.
I think it's good public discussion, too, and I've brought this up before, but this legislative session was a difficult, difficult legislative session, part of it being in healthcare and Medicaid and those issues, and I started adding up, when I went to lobby for the counties for the Medicaid issue, when I started adding up what Gulf County alone provides in healthcare, I quit, I can't, you know, at the end of the day, I can't imagine what the percentage is of the taxpayers' dollars, they don't realize that they pay all these Medicaid issues, they don't realize that they pay what happens in jail, they don't realize all the other issues that they pay concerning to do with insurance and healthcare, and it's staggering at that number, so it's always good debate, it's always good discussion, and we need to stay on top of it, there's no question about it, taxpayers' money.
And, and one thing, our agent of record, he does assist us with, such as the transition with Obamacare, and I know we've got some staff going to a seminar that they're putting on at Bay County this week.
What day is that?
Thursday.
Thanks Brett.
Yes, we can.
Can I get a motion to accept the Cassino General as it is?
Got it.
I got it.
And second by my...
Second by Mr. Yeager, any oppose? No oppose, motion carries, five and oh. Ms. Lynn.
I don't think I have anything this morning, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning, in front of you, you have your monthly report for the TDC for the month of April, I just want to bring up a few highlights, bed tax revenue for the month of April are up, they're up about fourteen point three nine percent for the first six months, our fiscal year started October one, five out of the six months showed increase, with the exception of November, which was down one percent, we're pacing, when we look at last year, where we were in 2012 for the first six months to this year 2012, we're up about thirty thousand dollars in revenues, which is sixteen point two seven percent over last year, so the numbers are increasing, and we're watching them every month. Web numbers are also up, so visitation to the website is up sixty percent from April 2012 compared to April 2013, we're tracking everything that we see through our paid media programs through Google Analytics, so we're watching the return on investment every day, we've set up a dashboard, and we can go in and we can look, there are some samples of that here, primarily, we're watching traffic coming into the website from our media programs, traffic coming into our website from referral traffic, and then traffic that comes into our website and shoots out to our partner sites, because we're a partner-based organization, nine out of ten, the top ten, nine of the top ten came into the website and went out to our partners, so I think that that's a very good return on our investments. The Welcome Center has been rebranded, so we, I invite you to come on over and see that our new brand photography and our light box is up for brand recall and recognition, visitation to the Welcome Center, April 2013 compared to April 2012, was up seventy-five percent, so we're seeing an increase across the board. Much of our efforts and our, and our marketing dollars, our paid media dollars are focused to search engine marketing, or you may know it as AdWords, Google AdWords, and we're watching that through a dashboard, February, March, and April, the monies for our search engine marketing program were from BP, we recently found out that we had additional dollars that came from that BP fund from last fiscal year into this fiscal year, so there's, there was an excess of fourteen thousand dollars, I reached out through the North, to BP through the Northwest Tourism Council, and they had suggested that I use those funds to continue on the search engine marketing program through May, and fully satisfy those funds by our next meeting in June, I'm vice chair of that council, and I'd like to get, make sure that we satisfy those funds, and our return on investment is very good, we're paying about forty-five cents per click, which is very good, and we're trying to lower that number down, so I'm going to continue on with that campaign and satisfy those funds. At our last meeting, we had several members of the community come in front of the advisory council to request additional or new dollars for some events that did not make it into the sponsorship and special funding cycle last year, as you recall, I came in early summer, typically that program is scored and awarded in April, the council approved that I come to you and asked for seventy-eight hundred dollars be given out to some new events that are coming up, additional monies were asked for for the scallop festival, they're making it a two-weekend event, the Friends of St. Joseph Bay State Park for their Bay Day, which is in September, so that's in this fiscal year, the annual street dance celebration, which falls in line with the centennial celebration coming up this summer, MBARA Kingfish Tournament, they're working to make sure that that event comes across Mexico Beach and Gulf County, and finally, the Port St. Joe Marina has asked for funds for National Marina Day, which is on June eighth, collectively, the sum is seventy-eight hundred dollars, I do have that in the budget, because we did budget for the instances like this, and I'm asking your approval to award those monies.
So moved, Ms. Chair.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager. Second by Mr. Mackamore, any oppose? No oppose, motion carries, five and oh.
The Navigate Media Program finished up in April, that was the targeted program in Atlanta and Birmingham, it was very successful, and you'll see a report in here that shows through our web analytics, we're actually able to hone in on the return from those two programs, Atlanta and Birmingham drove the most traffic to the website in, during March, February, March, and April, and that report is in there, and finally, we tried to have, to have our council meetings on a quarterly basis, it didn't work out, it makes for a very, very long, long, long meeting, so I've attached in your report a revised schedule, we're going to be going every other month now, as opposed to quarterly, last year we were doing monthly, so that's there for you, any questions?
Just to comment, Mr. Chairman, Jennifer's done a great job with briefly giving you some numbers and some things that have been happening, and she give a much more detailed report to the TDC Board our last meeting, and I appreciate that, I mean, it's well documented, what you're doing is doing well, I think at the end of the day, it's like I've told you before, we're going to run out of capacity, so those numbers of increase of fifteen and sixteen percent year over year, unless we start building some motels, or unless we start building some more houses, you know, those numbers are going to gradually come down, so don't be, I think the board shouldn't be shocked at some, sometime in the future that those numbers won't be as good as they are, but they're great right now, we appreciate that.
We need to focus on the shoulder season, I don't want them to go down.
I hear you, I hear you.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, just Jen, do you want to talk about the ordinance at your last meeting, briefly?
Yes, I've been working with the council to identify the expenditures that are associated with the four cents tax that we, that we are funded by, so the three cents would be for marketing and administration, and the one cent would be for beach nourishment, we put it in front of the council, and I walked through that with them, and as we move forward, we're going to hopefully make that be our guiding principles with how we, what, what we can do under each cent, and then update our ordinance and our SOP so that we're held accountable, and we know, everyone knows where the responsibility is.
And we're going to, we took the last eleven pages of the ordinance, and with the TDC's help, they all reviewed the new language, they've consolidated eleven pages of that ninety-eight ordinance, and really watered it down to about a page, a page and a half of where the new target and the focus are going to be with the, for the four percent, so we're going to advertise that, we're going to bring that before you all, and have a public hearing on that amendment to that ordinance, presumably the next meeting, or probably the first meeting in June.
And that aligns where, as we're doing budgeting, so that we're very clear where those, where those cents can be allocated, and also, I'm working on an SOP for the TDC, so all team members, or anybody who wants to know what we do, going all the way down to branding, and, you know, and professionalism, and style guides, and things like that, and I'll get that to you probably at the first meeting in June.
Jen, while you're up there, let me also mention, I know there was an issue with the use of the facility at one point, you went on Saturday and couldn't use the facility, but at any rate, we've got updated policy on that, I think, at the end of the day, about a year and a half, Jeremy, you may want to elaborate on it, about a year and a half ago, we updated that policy, so that needs to come through you, but that's one more thing of why we need to make sure that the TDC building is in TDC control, is because it's required by statute and law that those monies be, you know, spent for TDC function, but at the end of the day, just make sure staff and all those...
Well, and I'll clue that in the, in the SOP, I need to read that amendment to the policy.
While I'm talking about that, and you don't have to stand for this, but while I'm talking about that, I'll go ahead and, if you don't mind, talk about one of the issues that I wanted to talk about today, and that was, I was approached by one of the city commissioners and the city attorney, about let's figure out what we can do on this inter-local agreement, and both the city commissioner and I said, you know, we need to do this, we need to figure this out, there's a couple of things that are in there that need to stay, and we agree to that, there's a couple of issues that we need to work on, if the board would allow me to do that, I'm going to try to narrow that down with the city to at least something that they can, that we can both feel comfortable with, and let Jeremy work that up, and then distribute it to the board, and before we solidify that, let the board review it and say, yeah, we need to add this back, or we need to take this out, but out of the fifteen items in that inter-local, there's only three or four items that are of issue, and I think that we can work that out, and if y'all will give me that ability, I'll continue to work with the city commissioner on that, and we'll try to, we'll try to get that, because it's been a bone of contention for a number of years, and it's old, and it's outdated, and there's a lot of things changed since then, so I'll continue working on that, I'll work with staff, but anything we do will certainly go to y'all, let y'all review, and add to, or take away from, or whatever you think.
Other than the fire tax, what issues are, is the city bringing up that are causing them heartburn right now?
There's a couple of issues, there, I mean, that's their issue as far as the heartburn, but there's a couple of issues that I think we have to keep in there, and I think they're good with keeping in there, we've, we've received a letter, and that's why I think we need to respond back to that letter that we received a month or so ago, but one of the things is to make sure that the services that the city provides to the county residents is the same cost as what they provide city residents, and that's in that inter-local agreement, so I mean, that, I mean, that needs to stay, there's an issue with affordable housing that I think the city wants to work with us on, on that issue, but there's just a couple of issues, and there really is not much bone of contention with the city other than the fire tax.
So if we address the fire tax, are they willing to let the remainder of the inter-local agreement fit?
I think so, I think so, of what's left, but I think we need to address the fire tax, and we'll, that's what's in, going to be in the letter that we draft, and that you will get to review before we send, and, you know, there's, obviously, there's one or two issues for us, I mean, we want to, we want to be able for Jennifer and the TDC to, that was a bad agreement, number one, it's on city property, and it's a county building, and you got agreements there that we need to figure out, at the end of the day, the city, we were going to put it in your district, up there on the, at the park, and the city wanted it there, so I think they're willing to have that discussion, the city commissioner that I've talked to said he's certainly willing to have that discussion about let's, let's take care of the fire tax, and get that done for the city's benefit, and they will certainly address the TDC in that function, I think once those two issues are done, the others are very minor.
And do they intend to continue to hold up the redevelopment agencies move in order to get us to?
You know, that's what me and the commissioner talked about, we don't want either one of us holding the other hostage by one item or the other.
Well, the redevelopment agency move should not be intertwined with the inter-local agreement, redevelopment agency is losing money on this political move that, that the position that the city has taken, and fortunately, everybody at the TDC and at the redevelopment agency, they all work together, and they'll, they'll do whatever we need them to do, and we're fortunate that we have that, but it makes sense for the people of Gulf County to let the redevelopment agency move, it all works out, and I...
I agree with that, I think the redevelopment agency...
I'd like for you to talk to your city commissioner that you've been talking with, and convince them that it's the right thing to do, to let them go ahead and move, they've got space, they're paying for space.
I think they're very willing on that issue, I think their, their holdup was the fire tax in that issue, you know, there's other issues in there that are mute, there's a lot...
I think the fire tax, and Mr. Hammond, maybe you can help me with this, are we talking about approximately eight thousand?
Eight thousand dollars a year, it's not much.
We're talking about water tour rates would be my guess about the long-term deal, I mean, that's where the money is, and I think that's probably the whole of it in, it's probably not eight thousand dollars, even though that's what the argument's been, that's doable, that, really what we're talking about, when it boils down to their proposal, was eight thousand dollars out of a twenty-four dollar building.
I think another issue on that is that, you know, the fire tax has been an issue for them, and it's been more about principle to them than it has, and it's, then it's been more about principle to us than it, so I think an agreement with that, with some benefits to the county, with the, with the TDC building, whether it be eating the property to the county, or to the TDC and the county, or just giving a fifty-year dollar a year lease, or something like that, I think it can be worked out, I think we need to work it out, these times are getting more difficult, you know, by the year, and we need to work together to benefit all the public, because many of our constituents are both city constituents and their county, so I mean, we need to work together and figure this thing out, when they approached me, I said I would work on it, and I have, and we'll, we'll get that, and Jeremy, you may, in the next day or two, should have something put together, won't you, with, as far as what we've discussed?
Circulated to the commission, and I'll meet individually, each with you, and then you can ratify it at your next meeting, and then we can move forward and get it out to the city. If you recall, on April tenth, you all voted to try to separate the two issues, and we submitted that letter to them on April tenth, and then the city didn't move on the relocation, so at this point, that, that March twenty-seventh letter from the city about accepting that amended inter-local is what we'll respond to, directly just to that, and we'll incorporate the other issue into it, ideally.
And to address your issue, Michael, I think the last letter they sent, they addressed that issue, and they're, they're good with that issue, so I think it's, the ball's in our court now to respond back, I'm ready to respond back, let's, let's put this for the citizens of the entire county, and the, you know, in the city of Port St. Joe, let's put this behind us, and...
The inter-local agreement is an important agreement, it may not be the best drafted agreement, I mean, certainly there are better drafted agreements, but it is an important agreement, and it's particularly important to District Three, and...
Most important in your district.
You have, you have items in the agreement that have been completed, but when you have an agreement, like the inter-local agreement, that does not have a termination date, just because an item is completed, you don't have to go in and revise the agreement, it's just completed, that item is completed, so as far as this fire tax goes, and I don't believe that the city is causing, is making this much of a big deal about this agreement over eight thousand dollars, so I agree that we can look at the fire tax, and look at what is the right thing to do with the fire tax, but beyond that, I am not in favor of altering the inter-local agreement, and I'm not saying right, right here, I need to look at the issue with the fire tax, and see what they propose, and talk to staff, and I think we need to be very careful with altering this inter-local agreement, there's a reason it was put into place, and that area did not develop as quickly as people had anticipated, however, it will develop, and there are people who are living there, building there, there's building going on regularly, it's just not going as fast as they had anticipated, and I think we need to be careful to protect our, our folks.
I think one thing that everybody should take a look at is, once we, once we draft this letter, if you'll go down the inter-local agreement, there's fifteen items, eleven of them have been done, one of them is a mute point, because it's just an agreement to work together on the, on the recreation facility out there, so it means nothing to either one of us, because neither one of us has got six hundred thousand to put up on that now, so I, I think, you know, at the end of the day, take, take a look at it, take a look at the fifteen items, and then take a look...
And I have looked at the items, but again, when you have an agreement in place, if something's completed, or even if it's a moot point, you don't go in and revise the agreement for those purposes, it's not causing any grief for the city, so by create work, that's not needed.
Mr. Chairman, this all took place before you and I came on board, but when the TDC re-elected, and I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, the county sank around, what, seven hundred thousand dollars in this building here, and it was originally set up to go out to Vic and Hill, but the county graciously put it here in the city of St. Joe, where the people, and we just heard from Ms. Jenkins over here, seemed like each month, we're increasing and going and going, and we put it there to help the merchants here in Port St. Joe work with the city, but it rubbed me wrong when you got one or two commissioners that want to hold this to your throat, we'll get Ducky Johnson, move it out to there, and then it'll all go away, but it's a shame that the taxpayers of the county sunk this much money to try to help the city of Port St. Joe, then they want to, simply because we're running out of room over there, we ask for a simple move, and then they want to come back and, well, we'll agree to it if you'll agree to all of this, now, everything in a local... Now, everything in a local agreement had been going fine and they were raking in millions of dollars. I'm sure they wouldn't come up here and say, hey, we'd like to give you some money just out of goodness of our heart. I don't think so. But now then they want us to come back and revisit. So I just wanted to bring that out. We tried to help them and-
Mr.-
Yeah, get Ducky Johnson. He'll move it out there.
Yeah, my concern, I just want you to keep out of the water rates.
Exactly. We cannot do that.
When your, the utility costs from the city hall go to running the neck and neck race with the power company, you got, something ain't right. We really got some high water rates right here. I mean, you have, people have, water rates cost more than a power bill. I mean-
I understand. I pay mind.
I mean, and I mean, it's something serious to look at because if you're receiving one of these high water rates every month, I mean, the water this, I'm not going to even go there.
You know, there's no easy fix on all these items and that's why I committed to the commissioner that I would work with staff to draft something up for y'all to review. Absolutely, the board's going to make the final decision and y'all can make the comments that you want to make at the end of the day. And if it's that, no, we don't even want to submit this letter, then that's the way it is. I mean, that's what we'll do. However, I think a good faith effort on all of our parts to try to start working together a little more than we do will benefit the citizens. It'll benefit the public.
You got permission from the board to work on that, miss?
Thank you.
Ms. Sherry?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hughes?
As I discussed with you last meeting, we have EMS week coming up 19th through the 25th of May. It's National EMS Week. We went ahead and we've set up our appreciation dinner for our employees. It's going to be the 20th, 6 o'clock Eastern Central Time, Community, Honeybee Community Center. We invite y'all to come and meet the staff. We've conducted a poster contest in the third grades of the schools. We receive those posters back. We're judging them now. We're going to get trophies at that meeting. We're going to have an open house that we all stationed the 19th from 12 o'clock to 4 o'clock, show our equipment and take blood pressures and just invite everybody out to tell them to get a blood pressure check.
Thank you. Right?
Couple of things, Mr. Chairman. We had one bid, 1213-10 for inmate commissary. Something that was ongoing, we were satisfied and, but the contract had expired. We only had one bid, which was the current annual supply company and I recommend we accept them and let the attorney draw up a contract for 40 years.
I mean, we got a motion by Mr. McMoore.
Second?
Second for discussion, Mr. McDaniel?
No can. This is from-
Yeah, I figured to say. I didn't know I was in that business.
They're out of Georgia, these folks here.
All right. Well, okay.
You second stand, Mr. Yeager?
Yes.
I've got a second by Mr. Yeager in a pose. No oppose. Motion carries five and oh.
The only other thing, and Mr. McDaniel, of course, is chairman of the committee, but we're going to meet Tuesday with the constitutional officers for our first joint budget session and we'll be getting back with the board pretty quickly on time limits. We set the time on that chair Tuesday.
I believe the committee recommended 9:00 AM, I believe. I have not sent that to the clerk yet.
Mr. Chairman, while we got Mr. Hammond, can I ask him a question on an issue that I think we need to address? I surely want to address it because it's confusing to me. But Mike, I want to speak to you on that, on the bid on the firehouse there at White I'm a little bit confused on that. I think that the county policy is that anything over $10,000 that we go out for bid on, is that correct?
In most cases, that's correct.
In most cases. On this firehouse, now y'all going out for plan design to build?
That's correct.
On that, personally, I don't like it. And the only reason, I just don't think it's a fair bid. You know, I think, I think we buy the plans anyway, get the engineer to draw up a plan on any building or anything we do, get them to draw up the plans because we pay for it and put it out to the public. That way, everybody gets a fair shot at that bid. This plan design bid, the way I understand it, y'all bid it out, we have a committee that's set together and then the committee recommends back to the board on who to do the job. I just disagree with that issue, board members, and I, you know, I think the fair way to do this is just bid it out straight.
Again, it's up to the board what they want to do. For the last several years, I mean, it's best management practice to do that and we've done it since DOC was built that way. The last two fire departments we built was done that way. The board just did a big project, they do it that way. Where you get a team and it's most efficient, it cuts out change orders, it's whatnot. But again, y'all are boss men, so if y'all decide, and lady, y'all decide what you want to do, we'll do it that way. And if we do it the other way, we, of course, we back up and punt, but we get, hire an architect and do our own plans and then we bid out. And then the problem with that is, it's not a problem for us because whatever you want to do, a lot of times you have change orders because you've designed something you can't afford to build or vice versa and you change things. And when you've got a team doing it, you know what your price is. You have an X amount of money and you don't exceed that amount.
And you know the contractor that you want to do the job. On a bid, a straight-up bid, we take the lowest bid.
Well, the lowest and best bid, but that's-
Right, the lowest and best bid. So I truly believe that the best way to handle these gentlemen is to do an open bid on it. You know, if I need to put that in the motion, I will. And if it fails, it fails, but that's, you know, that's the way I think we should do things, including this White City Fire Station or any other building. Bid it out, you know? Everybody gets a fair shot like that. We're not-
Mr. Bryant, it's in your district.
But we've already gone out for bid on the design build and they've already submitted the bids, they've been collected, they've been opened. And it's a very common practice to go out for bid for design build. There's nothing wrong with that procedure. And Mr. Hammond has a point about working together in a team and getting your price down. I have been contacted by people in the community who had questions about the process regarding after the bids were submitted and opened. Where does it go from there? How is the committee?
The fire department will actually meet. We just got them yesterday. We'll meet probably next Monday and we'll make a recommendation to Don and unless y'all choose differently, it'll be in your consent agenda for a recommendation at the next board meeting.
Who is on the committee?
It'll just be the fire department members.
Okay.
There's no specific committee, but-
But do they go, do they look at the numbers, Mike? How do they determine who is the best bidder?
We requested packets and I believe we had five, five or six-
Five.
Five respondents. And you have a, the basic gist is, without reading the actual specific thing, is you have a certified contractor, you have an architect and/or engineer, and you have a team that, you know, this is what we've done in the past, this is what we built, this is our qualifications as a builder, this is what we've designed in the past, this is how we've worked in Gulf County or surrounding areas, this is the fire stations we've built, you know, these are our references, those type things.
Okay, but, excuse me. What about, what about the new contractor coming on board, Michael, who has not built a fire station in Gulf County? Does he get a fair shot at that bid?
He would have the same-
It don't sound like it from what you just told me.
He would have the same shot, but on the, on the, on the design build deal. If you were an architect right out of school and had never designed a fire station, you're probably going to get a very low score because we don't want to be your, we don't want to be the sounding rod. We want somebody that knows what they're doing, so-
That's my point.
In the end, in the end, we're trying to get the best bang for the county's buck.
Not a fair bid.
I mean, if the board wants to change it, that's fine, but-
I do and I'm making motion to change it.
Will the, will the committee narrow the field down to two or three and allow them to make a presentation so that they can go a little further into what their qualifications are?
My, and again, whatever the board wants us to do, my guess is we'll make one recommendation to the board, there's only five. If it were a huge project, I would think that would be the case. And I think we like, just for example, for the school board, I just know that they just went through one of these processes. In fact, several of the same bidders that bid on the school board project are bidding on this project. And I think they took the top three, but they had quite a number of applicants. So when we only have five and it's a relatively small project, we probably would just make the recommendation. But the board's going to have the same information that we have. If the board doesn't like the recommendation, the board-
But Mr. Hammond, a half million dollar project's not a small project.
I don't think it's going to be quite that much, but, I mean, in relative terms compared to like DOC, which was a million four, those type things. That's what I'm talking, I'm not saying it's not a little bit of money, I'm just saying it's not a house.
I have a motion to go strictly out for a bid straight out.
I got a-
I don't like this plan design.
I don't like the committee sitting behind table discussing it with contractors and first one thing and another and then presenting their recommendation to the board. I don't like that. I think it's unfair. It'd be a lot fair. We just went straight out for low bid.
I got a motion by Mr. McMoore, go straight out for a bid. Can I get a second for discussion? Can I get a second for discussion? Motion fails for lack of second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And just let me say this, not to blabber the point, but I was just talking with Jeremy. Since we're already into this project and we've already taken sealed bids and we would open ourselves up to a problem if we change horses midstream, if the board wants to discuss what you want your staff to do on future bids, we're willing to have that.
Mr. Hammond, the motion has been took.
Okay.
It's dead. So this issue is dead. We will move on as usual and it's over with. I've addressed it. You know, I got a failed vote on it. I didn't get support. I can live with that.
That's all I have.
Mr. attorney?
I have nothing.
I have one issue. I just want some clarification about the issue with streaming the meetings in real time, where we are with that. Are we, they're not streaming in real time?
Can I make sure I can answer that? When we initially started the live stream video feeds, it was a kind of a pilot project for us at the request of several citizens. The equipment that we used in order to maintain the live stream was actually equipment that we already had. We've gotten several quotes now to be able to continue that process because the equipment we had was not adequate to continue the live feed. It was not quality video, it was not uploading appropriately with personnel trying to do this prior to board meetings and get it started. So we've gone out, got several quotes. It's actually going to be part of our budget this year to give the board the actual quotes for that because they are quite extensive. We have lots of ideas and ways that we can get better quality. I know WeWall was an issue with the quality of the video that was provided through public service. So there's several different items that we would like to incorporate into our communications and website and lots of ideas we have, but goes without saying that all of that takes money and we just have not been able to get the equipment that we currently have that was not costing us anything to be able to provide that service. So it's something we definitely want to provide. It's something that we are putting on the website, but the way we're having to provide that is from the taped meetings and putting it on after the fact. If the board so desires, we will be glad to purchase what we need to be able to continue that live feed, but that alone is going to cost us between 18 and 20,000 dollars with the current quotes we have to provide that. So in that, that's the, that's the only way we can do it. We can certainly continue to look for more cost-effective measures, but in order to get a quality and quality feed as well as a dependable feed to be able to do it live, it's going to take updated equipment.
I get a lot of calls from folks who relied on the streaming video because they cannot leave work or leave their businesses to come to the meetings. Now, I would like for the board to consider holding the meetings after business hours or some of the meetings after business hours the way that we used to hold the meetings. I can understand that this streaming is an issue for us right now. And I know that there has been some discussion about that and I'd like the board to consider making that change.
Is it a form of a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion to move the meetings to the afternoon after work hours, I believe. Were they at 6:00 in the past?
The clerks just informed me as well that they are also looking into, they actually do the taping of our meetings and they are actually in the process of checking with their software company to see if maybe they can provide this live stream as well. So that may be a very cost-effective way to continue this.
I got a motion on the floor by Ms. Bryant to change the meetings back to the present, back to our, as time.
6 o'clock, right? 16.
Do I have a second?
Can I get a second for discussion?
No second? Motion fails for lack of a second.
And just talking about that, you know, we've tried this in the mornings for a few months now, number of months.
Well, are we supposed to discuss a motion when it wasn't seconded?
There you go.
It's dead.
It's dead. You're right. About my issue with Mr. Hammond.
Ms. Bryant, do you have anything else?
I'm done.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do have a major issue that's affecting myself in District 1 and I asked Lynn if y'all would give me one minute to, I actually brought some pictures I wanted to show the board and the public with what I'm dealing with up there. I really don't know the answer, but I got to make a stab at it because it is a major problem for us. Ms. Lynn, if you would, y'all don't mind, look at the pictures on the-
Can I get someone to cut the lights off right there in the back?
It'll only take a minute.
My, my issue up there in District 1 is honeybees.
What are honeybees?
Honeybees. And, and the reason is because District 1 is the Tupelo capital of the world, I guess, and part of District 2. But this is some pictures that I, that I took.
All these, this is all honeybees.
Hard to see.
The house. Swimming pool. With his honeybees, all honeybees. All honeybees.
That's it.
Okay. Bye.
I get the lights.
All right. Here's the, here's the issue I'm having with it. As you see, I mean, it's bees everywhere, everywhere. I don't think the, I know that the local people really and truly is not where the problem is coming from because they've been there all their life. But here recently, over the past years, we've had, and we're still having so many out-of-town people, South Carolina, Wisconsin, Michigan, New Jersey, New York probably, whatever. But anyway, the issue is they're bringing them in here, they're bringing them in here on these big semi-trailer loads. And I'm talking about boxes and boxes of bees and they bring them to the community, the District 1 especially, and Mr. McDaniel has some also, and they just bring them into the community and unloading them. We have got bees. If you want to see bees, come to District 1 and let me take you riding. I just take you to my house. I can sit on my back porch and I can look at three different apries of bees on my back porch. My pool dogs stand there and fight them all day. Dogs are getting stung. Little kids, the little kids can't swim in the swimming pool, they're getting stung. My phone is ringing off from the hook dealing with this issue. And I've been in contact with the state inspector, Jeff Pippin, last couple of days. Luckily, legislation has passed new law coming out July the 13th is going to help a little bit and David, you probably going- And, and David, you probably gonna be a part of this or whatever. But they've passed legislation and law that these people are gonna, unless it's under agriculture, they're only gonna be allowed so many hives of bees on a piece of property. That's gonna help some. That's not gonna solve the problem. Problem is, and I'm telling y'all, this is a growing problem. I've seen it over the years. The problem is our out-of-town people get following them here by the trailer loads. We have a, we have a property owner that owns a piece of property here and, uh, a lot. We have homeowners that live here, homeowners that live here. They lease that piece of property to that fellow up there in California or whatever. They don't care because they don't live there. They're living over here at Mexico Beach, Sancho Beach or whatever. They getting money out of leasing that piece of land to those bee, beekeepers. You know, it's a, it's a money thing, but anyway, I do have a major issue here. When I get, when my phone heats up, it's every year, it's three weeks out of the year that I go through this. Mr. Carter, I asked you to come down today for a reason, to try to help me with this issue and ask the board to try to help guide me, see what direction we need to go with this. But I'm telling you, this is out of control. It's not fair for the little kids not to be able to swim in their swimming pool three weeks out of the year. It's not fair for them not to be able to go outside because of a honeybee. You know, so I, I think what I would like to do with this issue, if Mr. Carter would work with me, is try to form a, uh, committee or something, Mr. Carter, with beekeepers, the beekeepers, and work with Jeff, the state inspector. And let's see if we can get a solution. I don't know. The, the problem is years ago, we had no problem because all the beekeepers went down the river. Any of the near, right back there, she knows exactly what I'm talking about with her daddy. They used to put all these bees on the river system down there. They barged them down the river. They got them out of, out of the community. I'm not gonna live with a beehive at my window. I can tell y'all. We've had bees, unfortunately, that's been poisoned in the last three or four days. And I'm talking about hundred thousand dollars worth that's been poisoned. And it is a problem for me.
The guys listening, Mr. McMoore speak about these bees, look like we got a growing bee problem.
I, I can tell you, when I get calls from Howard's Creek talking about bees, I know there's a problem. And that I've already got calls from Howard's Creek, so I don't know. Rowley, you may have some, some suggestions. I don't know if you need a, a special committee to, to look at something or, or what, but I, I don't know, I don't know what the answer is.
Mr. Carter, could you come to the podium?
That's why I'm here. I don't know the answer. I'm asking the board and, and anybody that has any advice to help me with this issue. I know we can, I know we can work it out, but I think it's gonna have to be a group of people, you know, with the state inspector and, and the local, probably beekeepers or whatever. I think if we get seven, eight of those type people sitting down at the table discussing the issues and discussing the problem, I think we can move further.
Are y'all aware that I'm strictly education? I, the extension service, what we do is education. We're not in regulatory.
Wait a minute, wait a minute now. The honey, the honey, the honeybee. No, no, no. He's not gonna give away that easy because the honeybee is very important to us because he pollinates our farm crops.
That's what I do. I educate people on what they do. Where they gonna be and this kind of thing, like you said, and I'm gonna push that off to somebody else. But no, as you said, it wasn't, if y'all were aware that a honeybee, they were forage anywhere between three and five miles from the hive. Or raised for three to five miles from the hive, they will go out looking for nectar. So, you know, in other words, I don't know what kind of restriction you can put, but I just give you an idea. You know, if you do sit one here on a given parcel of land, that he may go three miles into the swamp looking for Tupelo. It may be, in other words, if Tupelo is not blooming, it may be, in other words, uh, uh, a zay or whatever's blooming somebody's lawn, you know, in other words, if he gonna look for nectar, they, they, they are hustlers now, okay? So in other words, wherever he goes, you know, within that point of that hive, it could be a problem.
I understand that, Mr. Carter, but I think where the big issue here is, we have such an influx of bees that is, that are being brought down here from out of state.
Blowing bees.
You can call it blowing bees, whatever you wanna call it. You know, they are a problem.
You missed opportunity, couldn't you?
I wanted, I wanted to say it, be honest and truthful with you, but I was trying to be respectful.
But it, it is a lot of migratory beekeepers, you know, during Tupelo. Like I said, we ignored it for the Tupelo honey, you know, in other words, it's none, you know, all of that produces man along the Apalachicola River. And like I said, we along that river there and you do have quite a few migratory beekeepers that come in during that flow, which is now.
Right now.
Right, right now. You know, they come in and they are sitting for three weeks, four weeks, in other words, and collecting, you know, Tupelo honey. And then, like you said, and they move back out and then nevertheless, on the land or whatever, in other words, they, normally the procedure is they get a percentage of the honey. Okay, uh, so, you know, it can be a lucrative business for people that has land in that general area.
But it's not fair. My point is not fair for us, little kids and the dogs to suffer and get penalized for those three weeks for that operation. It's, we didn't used to have the problem when we just had all the local beekeepers here. They understood, they respected the neighbor, they kept the bees out of sight, out of sound. Nowadays, they bring them on and send my trucks, is my point, gentlemen. Somebody in this needs to go riding with me.
You, you, you correct.
There, there's no telling. I can't even get a count of the number of beehives that's in District One right now. Nobody knows, not even the state inspector. And I can show you within my house, a dozen, a half a mile of my house.
Only is it...
It's more of, wait just one minute. It's more of a lucrative business now. Mr. McDaniel, you know, you grew up with honeybees. It's more of a lucrative business now than what it was ten years ago.
Yeah, correct.
You know, so...
But we shouldn't have to punish.
I, I've had all those calls too, okay, but like I said, I, I can get around to calling the bee inspector, in other words, we...
Well, I want to, gentlemen, I'm gonna put, I wanna ask this board then, I think we're gonna need to, to sit down a committee with this. Whoever heads it up, if Mr. Carter chooses not to, I'm gonna respect that, Mr. Carter.
I'd be a part of it, do anything I can to help you, you know that, okay? But I agree that you need to bring some beekeepers in. In other words, you need to come in audits. Or in other words, having the hives can be, for example, can be set within a given area.
That's gonna be law come July the thirteenth on, on un-agricultural land. Now, as long as it's agricultural land, you can still set as many as you want.
Is, I, I know we, the only area that has Tupelo, is it specifically for Tupelo? And, and is, are, are, are other counties having the same issue?
It's, well, one thing, you know, you gotta realize that in the Howard's Creek area, that's one of the fastest growing areas in, I would say, in the Three County area now, okay? You have a lot of, you know, people and growth have occurred there over the last five years, more so than any other area, your geographic area within the Three County area. So that's why the problem, you've got more people now than what you did five years ago. So, yeah, I can say we, they are having a problem too because you got more bees coming here. And plus you have more residents in that given area.
I agree with you there. But you don't have to sit that thirty eyes of bees up in your backyard with a neighbor here and a neighbor here, door to door.
It, it, and I have to be careful what I say. It, it had to been audited, come from y'all or from somebody that has authority to do it. We strictly, like I said, we education what bees can do, the benefit of bees and how far they forage and how we can, in other words, live, how beekeepers and residents can live together. That's our area. Now you decide on how many we'll be per acre or per mile or whatever.
Uh, the legislature's already done that. They have passed law. This new law's coming out July the thirteenth. But that's not gonna solve the problem. I don't care if you have one hive sitting up at your back door, you still gonna get a bee, you know? I don't know the answer, gentlemen. That's why I brought it up. I, I had to address it, you know? And, and I'm searching for answers on how to resolve it. If you, anybody, I'm, I'm all ears, even from the public, you know?
And you're correct. I was, I was in Mississippi yesterday and I got three calls. Out of Mississippi, in other words, concerning these bees, you know?
You want me to count the calls on my phone?
That was yesterday. I'm not...
Yeah, three calls would've been great. I could've handled that.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Carter, if I may, on this issue, uh, what's happened, uh, too with the Tupelo and, uh, being representing Guff County, our river flows, Tupelo tree requires a lot of water. It needs, the base of it needs to have an ample supply of water. The farther you come downstream, the Apalachicola River, it flattens out more than down in the Howard's Creek area. Jump across the river in Franklin County and Liberty County, you got more. Secondly, uh, back when I was coming up, uh, and you mentioned their names, the Lanier family, they had probably three apries, and that's what they call a bee yard, an apry, and, uh, Whitfields, uh, just to name those two. They were one hundred percent were located on the banks of the Apalachicola, Chippodale rivers. Well, you don't have it anymore. That's all state land now. And in order to get an apry over there, it's so much red tape, it's easier to just bring them to the hill. Now, second issue, and I have a gentleman that lives out, uh, he just came up from Orlando, purchased property out on, uh, three eighty-six. It's his property. I feel like he has a right to do what he wants to with his property. He brings bees up and then he transports them all over the United States. Uh, I think he gets like sixty-five dollars a hive. He will carry them, load them back up there and we will take them to California for pollination purposes. And they may wind up in Nebraska and then bring them back into Florida. But they're not honey collectors. True, the bee goes out and collects, he's gotta have food. But they're primarily staging there to move them into other states for pollination. We're really running a problem with our agricultural system with not getting pollination, you know? Our, what was the country of China, they taking humans to pollinate because they don't have the bees. So he's here for a purpose and, uh, you can, I guess, as, as Commissioner McMoore, and I see it too. I've seen more bees moved up and down seventy-one this year than I have in the past. It's a lot, and, uh, people I don't know, used to, we knew all the beekeepers here in Guff County, but I don't know them.
Mr. McMoore, I have to agree, okay? It is hard for bees and humans to cohabitate, you know, it's, you know, eh...
Best way to deal with a, with a honeybee is out of sight, out of mind.
I sure like them out there in my garden because they pollinate me.
They have a, they have their purpose, you know, but nevertheless, like you said, and as you were saying back in the day, you know, when the Laniers and I first came here, you know, you inherited all the residents that you have in Howard's Creek now and, uh, and then Daleke.
Yeah, it's not only Howard's Creek. Come on up to Daleke.
Exactly, exactly, you know? Whether you look, in other words, the population and the residents probably have increased one hundred four, you know, since then. So that, you know, it's an issue now.
Tell me what the answer is, gentlemen. I don't know. I can't, I can't. I was sworn to protect and serve the people. I got little kids out there being stung by bees. That's my issue. This is my job.
Mr. McMoore, won't you get together with that committee that you want to be with and see what you all come up with?
Will you work with me on that, Mr. Carter? Okay, if you'll work with me on that, I'd, I'd like to do that and sit down at the round table and see if we can come, cause another week from now, let's, you know, it's, it's gonna be gone. We have this three weeks out of the year. We have one more week to deal with it. But we have next year, it's gonna be worse come next year. So this is an issue that we need to be working on.
If you'll work with me, uh, we'll put something together and see what happens.
What did Jeff tell you? Did he come over? Did he look the bee inspector?
Yes, he's been over, working with me, uh, he's actually gotten some of the fellas to move their bees out of the way. You know, away from the play zone, in other words, the kid's zone or whatever. So it's workable. It's just something that we have to sit down and, as a group and put together. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Couple items. What I want to talk about a little bit, and this is really for the attorney, um, we've been working with FWC, FWC for a, a while on doing a habitat conservation plan, and I know that's important, um, especially to the Cape and development and those kind of things and about the beach mouse. And I know we've been back and forth talking about, you know, uh, who's gonna ride it. And we finally, you know, they've, they've got a grant, but there's a matching portion of that grant. Matching portion can be, uh, by, uh, some of our staff working with them or even providing them a, a space. Uh, they have said that we could get enough in-kind contribution that we wouldn't have any, um, dollar amount out, and that's what we were working for. They won't put that in writing, but I, uh, just for the public's knowledge, we are still working on that issue with, with FWC. Hopefully, uh, in the very near future, we'll get that thing done. And, you know, I mean, there's issues for ovation and many different places out there on Cape Sandblasts about, about this beach mouse. And, uh, we're, we're working through that. So just for the board's information, we're, we're working through that and trying to get that up, habitat conservation plan. It will actually cover the entire county. And so we're working, we're working on that. Just wanted to public that. Um, Cobra issue, we've just got, uh, information from our lobbyist that finally, after a pretty good long time working on that Cobra issue, that we're gonna get a hearing, uh, which is tremendous. Uh, much farther along than we've ever got on this issue. Good part about that hearing too is there's about four other states, three or four other states that are involved in trying to remove a Cobra area from their state too. So, uh, the hearing will go hopefully well and from there, hopefully we can get that legislation before the Congress and, and get that passed. And that would be a huge impact to our, our local community, the Cape Sandblasts area and Indian Pass area. So, uh, that's what, you know, this board made a commitment here about a year ago to, to hire a lobbyist. And that's the only way that we've got as far as we, we have. So I, I appreciate the board's commitment on that. So that issue is working along with the FEMA issue. Uh, I think they've about made a decision on whether they're gonna give us that fifteen million dollar reimbursement uh, for sand that we've lost. So if they do that, we'll have a, a problem solved with, uh, with nourishment on, on Cape Sandblasts. So hopefully those two issues are finally coming to a, a little bit of a head there. So that's going along well. I know that y'all had a workshop when I had to be in Tallahassee one day and, and on another issue and we, we, y'all talked about, uh, landfill and other issues. We've been working with folks at Cape Sandblasts. We want to provide an opportunity for recycle. And I don't know how much y'all discussed that or even if you did discuss it in the workshop. However, we've had some, we've, and Caleb is, is in the audience from Waste Management. And, uh, they've given us a proposal for a pilot project that we can do on Cape Sandblasts to see if it works and, and, and then go from there and maybe expand that, I think, uh, you know, over in another district and maybe even on the north end if, if, if the interest is there. It's not a mandatory deal, but it's an opportunity for recycle which many of our constituents want. And so Caleb, i- if, if you've got anything to add to that, what, what I've talked about, I think the costs that we've got from y'all on, on the entire rest of the year, uh, fiscal year would just be six thousand dollars. Is, was, is, is that?
That's worst case scenario.
That's the worst case scenario. So it, you know, it may not wind up costing them two or three thousand dollars for this pilot project. It's the right thing to do. It's something that the community's been, been asking for, for a pretty good long time. Waste Management's worked with us and, and to be honest with you, I'd like to go ahead and proceed with that and, uh, get, uh, up to six thousand dollars for that recycle pilot program and then, uh, work with the budget committee next year on what that number would be for the entire year worth work with Waste Management and, uh, and go from there. And just like the board's thoughts on that.
Is that cost gonna come from the public, from Cape Sandblasts now? Is that gonna come out of the county tax now?
No, it, it would actually come out of the county taxpayers', uh, dollar amount. And I, I'll tell you another thing that we need to talk about while we're talking about this recycle, the, you know? Uh, and y'all talked about this in the, in the workshop, I understand, and that's mandatory garbage pickup. At, at the end of the day, the way that the recycle program will work, uh, is for us to do mandatory garbage pickup. And I know you have some issues on mandatory up there about, hey, let's do this. I think it's a kindler, gentler, I think, with some of the discussions on... hey, let's do this, I think it's a kindler, gentler, I think, with some of the discussions on, on this mandatory garbage pickup. But I think at the end of the day, we have got to move towards that to solve many of the problems that we have, uh, with our, with our waste stream. Um, you know, I think that you could incorporate, I don't know if we start a committee or what we start as far as, uh, mandatory, but I think, uh, with that, you could have the, uh, actually limb pickup. We're running low staff in, in our public works. And, you know, if you could incorporate, uh, debris, yard debris, uh, into that field, that's what the public would pay for. And, you know, I think that's, that's the direction that the, that the county needs to go, and I know we'll have to work through some issues for the elderly and all those kinds of things, and I think that we can do that, but I think that, that the way that all this works together, along with the landfill issues, is to proceed with, uh, proceed with going in that direction, and just want to get the board's in, input on that also, but, uh.
I, I'm, I'm, you know, I have, I have a problem with, I, I think maybe with, with spending tax dollars to do a pilot program on that recycling. Um, I, I think there's another way to, we may could do that.
I'm, I'm, I'm all, all open, open ears, and, and, uh, we've actually got some folks from, from, uh, South Gulf County that have requested this over a number of years. We have finally been able to work with Waste Management and, and figure something out. It would even, we could, the facility could even be wrapped, uh, with, with Gulf County TDC stuff, so.
I'm just not sure if I'm on board with you on that.
Understand.
Six thousand dollars put a knot on me.
I, I understand, I understand that concern. I'd love to start that project, uh, this fiscal year instead of waiting to, to put it in the budget, but, yeah, I mean, it's, it's board's decision. It's an, it's, it's something I think that it's the right thing to do for our community. And even though it would be on the south end, uh, I mean, it, it would be available for anybody, you know, to, to put into the recycle. I'd like to proceed with that, and if I get voted down, I, I mean, I'd just get voted down, but I'd like to, I'd like to proceed with that pilot program with recycle and let me find, let me and work with Jeremy and Don on finding that six thousand dollars where it doesn't hurt us any, and, uh, and, and proceed with that. I'll put it in form of a motion to proceed with that pilot program with, with, with Waste Management.
You got a motion by Mr. Yeager?
Second for discussions.
I got a second for the discussion by Mr. Mackman.
Uh, Mr. Yeager, I didn't understand, uh, the people want this, and we're here to serve the people. Our duties, and it's a pilot, if it works, then it'll expand. If it doesn't, at least we tried it. So recycling is very important, uh, the, uh, uh, we, I won't call it garbage, we'll say the debris today is not the same debris twenty-five years ago. You have so many chemicals and different things in it, and, uh, things out there that'll hurt you when you get, when you burn it or you let it lie around, so this may be good, uh, you know, we do this for the simple reason we can learn from it.
I agree.
I got a motion by Mr. Yeager, I got a second by Mr. Mike Daniel.
I, I'd just like to say that this is something that I would've liked to have been able to take a look at and review before voting on today. Um, I, I think it requires a little bit more review than just a vote today.
You want to?
We got a motion by Mr. Yeager. I got a second by Mr. Mike Daniel. Do I have any opposed?
I'm opposed just in the sense that I would like to have a little more opportunity.
You know, Ms. Chairman, I'm not opposed to gi- giving the opportunity to review some more, uh, but let's, let's review it for two weeks, and if, if two weeks is long enough, and let's bring it up, back up in two weeks, and I'll, if, if, if that's the wishes of the board, I'll, I'll withdraw my motion for that.
I'll withdraw the second to the motion.
I'm good with that.
We're just gonna hold it off for two weeks?
For two weeks, and I, 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 I think another thing now, we, we, at some point, need to address this issue about mandatory garbage pickup, and we need to figure it out uh, that works for, for the elderly and, and the folks that, that, you know, that's very difficult to do, but I, I think it's the right thing to do to review that, uh, Mr. Chairman.
You want to entertain Joe's recommendation that, that the board seemed receptive to, to go ahead and raise the tipping fee incrementally, uh, his recommendation was forty dollars a ton, and that'll, that'll help, that'll help some in the next three months before then.
Yeah, I, I, I'll, I'll, I'll put that in the form of a motion. That was a recommendation by Joe a long time ago, and we should've done it a long time ago, so.
Crazy tipping fee.
Okay, wait, wait a minute, we're getting, we're up, we're up, Budget Committee. Uh, we were working on that. You want to go ahead and advance that now?
You know, I, I think Joe's made that recommendation a long time ago, and I think you gotta implement it, and you don't, it doesn't necessarily, it, it's not an expenditure. It's a revenue, so you didn't, it doesn't necessarily have to go through the budget process, uh, you know, at least if you've got a few months where you're collecting that amount, you've got more definitive answers and numbers for what your revenue stream may be next year, too. But Joe, I, I, you know, I'm, I defer to you, you're the expert.
Yeah, we're gonna delay the, uh.
Yeah, we already, we already.
That's taken care of. Getting kind of off a base here.
First off, was the increase to forty dollars a ton for, uh, what comes into the landfill? The exception to that is what comes in from Mexico Beach, is gonna be sixty dollars a ton. Okay, uh, they need to help out a little bit more uh, because the landfill does run in the red. And it costs us money to take their garbage, their, uh, limb debris, and that's what we take, is limb debris from Mexico Beach. And if they decide that that's too much, then they can look for alternatives.
Mr. Danford? Uh, not necessarily in this order, but, uh, our five points out there, our prime users are the city of Port St. Joe. Again, not necessarily in this order. City of Mexico Beach and lying there, and contractors.
We have some from Mexico Beach.
I'm talking about, uh, the city of, the city of Port St. Joe.
Yes.
There, the city of Mexico Beach, which is the only outside entity there, and also contractors. Are they the prime users of this?
We have quite a few, uh, residential customers.
Okay.
And there are some days when we see very few. There are other days when we have, uh, forty or fifty out there, just residential people. And, uh, mostly on the weekends. We, we don't see too many, uh, we don't see too many businesses on the weekends, but we.
That's when your residential people come on the weekends, and that's one of the reasons we open on Saturday.
Yes, sir.
For their convenience.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, when you, uh, uh, mentioned about increasing to the, really party's not gonna, it'll help a little, but we're still, we, we charge forty, and when we send it to Bay County, they charge us, what, seventy?
No, they charge us forty-four twelve.
Forty-four twelve, Bay County, plus we have to, uh.
We have to take it there.
Furnish the transportation, so we are, we're not, we're gonna never get rich at that. We won't get rich at that type of business, okay. But, uh, did you want to increase, uh, include the city of Mexico Beach, because that, I can't see them trucking their debris all the way to Steel Field when they can use this, it'd be a lot cheaper, more economical for them to use this landfill with an increase.
Sure, it'd be economical for them, that's why they do it. Now, uh, they're also outside my county.
That's what I'm saying there, an outside entity that's coming into this county.
So I believe that they need to pay more for the privilege.
And that's the reason for the sixty?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Yeah, understanding, understanding because they're an outside entity, the, the taxpayer's been sup- supplementing this budget for years. And so we're trying to get it to where this is a user, uh, fee, and, and it pays for itself. I don't know if we'll ever get quite there, but Joe's heading in the right direction, and, and so I'm for raising those fees and whatever rates that Joe says, says he needs to raise them to, I'm, I'm for that.
Final, final thing, all right. I would like to set this, say, at June first, not effective immediately, nothing like that, because we gotta set the computers up, have to notify everybody. So if we put it out at, say, June first, June first would be good for, for me, I could get the computers set up.
Okay, gentlemen, don't it make sense, I'm not a businessman, but if, if it's costing us forty-four dollars per ton to haul it to to get rid of them panty mall over there, not counting the labor that we use in the truck, wouldn't it make sense to at least cover that cost? Forty-four, you know? What is it, Joe, forty-four point something?
Forty-four twelve.
Yeah, forty-four twelve.
And, and, and I've looked at this before, I think that Franklin County, Franklin County pays forty-six dollars a ton for, over there.
The pros and cons to it.
Yep.
If you increase it too much, people won't bring their stuff. They'll throw it in the river, they'll take it to leases. Uh, we already have a problem, and I talked about this before, with contractors that are not bringing their debris to us. They're finding an empty lot, and this is, this is landscaping contractors. They'll find an empty lot, drop it there. We've had pictures of them doing it. You know, and unless you, uh, uh, use the law to make them do what they need to do, then it will continue. And they drop it on an empty lot, who picks it up? Sweet old Gulf County.
I mean, this city of Port St. Joe, they're gonna carry it to the landfill.
Yes.
Exactly, the city of Mexico, one of our big thongs is, yes, you mentioned these, uh, uh, landscape, I had, uh, a person showed me, I drove down here and looked at, says, there's the palm limbs, and there's the trees they came off of. You know, it's funny, they got from there out on public right away, our truck to pick up all those that landowner paid this contractor, and that was part of the services, so, uh.
Well, I, I, I gave you my.
I know, I know, it's, uh, it's an ongoing issue.
There again, Joe, what's your recommendation?
My recommendation goes back to what I said, forty dollars a ton, sixty dollars for Mexico Beach. And we implement it, uh, about at least two weeks down the road.
Okay, so, so move, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bryant, do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and no.
Okay, and that starts June first, okay.
Uh, the only other thing I had, Mr. Chairman, uh, was basically a little bit of a legislative update. I, I think I spent more time in Tallahassee than I ever have before because of several issues. One of the, one of the most troubling to, to me was initially, uh, they were gonna cut out our work crews from DOC. We've, we've got that killed. I think we've got it killed to the point that it won't ever come back up for, for the next few years. There's full support for our work crews in all the sixty-seven counties. That's, that, that was a major, uh, victory for us. The other was Medicaid, Medicaid issue, um, that, um, is gonna be an issue in the next two years. They've pretty much, it's gonna, it's gonna rise a little bit, it's gonna, for Gulf County, I think the number was a little bit over two hundred thousand, which we paid a hundred and ninety-one, or going to pay about a hundred and ninety-one, it looks like in this fiscal year. There's a change in two years that they're going to go from a, uh, what the, I think what they call is a, a, uh, user amount, that you pay what, what you actually in your county use for Medicaid, to a enrollee. And that means however many enrollees there is, whatever the number over the entire state is, uh, they'll average that out, and, and your county will pay that amount. Now, that's gonna hurt small counties. And they've given us two years to work on that legislative issue, and we'll continue to work on that legislative issue for there. But again, I just want to reiter- reiterate to the public, these are tax dollars, these are your property tax dollars that are going to pay these kinds of things, and, and, you know, the, the more we can pay attention to that, uh, the better we'll be. Uh, there's a couple more issues, but we've, we've, we got those handled, too. There was an issue with, a little bit with Restore. All that worked out fine, so I think at the end of the day, with the increase in budget, it looks like all the agencies are gonna have more money. That means actually a few more dollars for grants, a few more dollars for DOC, a few more dollars for DOT, so uh, the increase in e- even DOT dollars, uh, was over fifty million dollars into their road programs. So, uh, you know, I think all in all, uh, Chris Doolin did, did a great job. He represents Small County Coalition. He, I mean, he's there on a daily basis, and he did a great job for, for the small counties and for Gulf County in particular, so. With that, uh, if, if anybody had any further questions on, on the legislation, uh, I think Chris has put out some emails and give you a little rundown, and, uh, Small County Coalition, uh, has, has served us well. That's all I have.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first, I'd like to commend, uh, Commissioner Yeager for the job that he has done with the legislature this year, and the people, I've said this in the past, and we've all said it. You don't have a face there at the table, you're gonna get left out, and, uh, Guff County, we're known, uh, through Mr. Yeager in Tallahassee, well, so we're known in Washington DC from our trip, but I just want to commend you, Commissioner Yeager. I have a few things that will be, I will not put any motions on the floor. Uh, first of all, I see is this, uh, Dr. Hardeman here, and just to inform the board back with this Cobra issue, uh, U.S. Representative Trey Radel, R-A-D-E-L, Radel, I guess. There's an island down off of, uh, between, uh, Charlotte and Lee County, it's called Gasparilla Island. He's introduced legislation to help there, and we have about two more counties in the state, so hopefully with this Cobra issue, and remember, it has to be a vote, it has to be passed by majority, the votes of Congress. So we are moving good on there. Got an, we all got an email from Amanda Wood, who, with, from the Ferguson Group, she's been before the board here, and, uh, they're really pushing on this, so hopefully we'll get this Cobra issue and get this, what is it, John Chaffey? I think that, get it lifted for, out on the Cape, and hopefully these good people down in the state of Florida. Uh, having said there, uh, I have an issue with, uh, it was brought to my attention just yesterday with, uh, and I see Scott here, is anyone here from, uh, Marshall's office? Scott, are you here? I can address you right there, you don't have to come up. Our GPS system, and you may can help this, that's above my head. When people from outside of the county and outside of this area are trying to go to Guff CI, especially if they come from the, uh, western part of the state, the GPS sends them down through Kemp Cemetery, which sends them right out into Hunting Leases, and, uh, uh, the, uh, people there in, uh, the Wetafo area have to go out and retrieve them, they get out there to get lost, they call on the cell phones, they don't know where they're at. Is there any way that you can do anything or, or help out? Well, if you want to come on up, come on. But to get this off and get it away from Kemp Cemetery, now, I can have our, uh, uh, Public Works post signs on the Kemp Cemetery Road, it just, no access to Guff CI. We can do that as a county, but what can you, what can we do about this GPS?
I have made several attempts to try to update some of those GPS, uh, to Garmin and TomTom. They, um, it's up to those GPS companies to update their maps. Um, they don't, they won't necessarily talk with me, but what I can, what they ask me to do is to go to their website and update their streets, and people can do this in the community, too. If they see an error, they can go to, uh, like Garmin, and actually submit an update to where they see a mistake, and it can be corrected. Um, I know I've taken the step to remove all the trails, all the pig trails off of our street database, so that when people do request that GIS data, they don't get the pig trails going with it, that sometimes, you know, those GPSs were used to route people. I know we had a call come in recently where someone got lost out in the woods, and they had called me back to help them out, would try to figure out where they were at, because their GPS told them to turn down this pig trail, and they got two miles off the beaten trail and got stuck, and, uh, needed help.
And you asked them, well, where are you? Well, I don't know where am I at, so we gotta go try to find them.
And the coordinates were coming out, St. Vincent Island, it was a mess, and we finally had him call the nine-one-one system back, and then because the nine-one, the nine-one system we have, they was able to map his exact, exact location, and with the mapping system that we have in nine-one-one, we were able to pinpoint him exactly and, and route somebody to help him out. But that, it is a problem in all GPS units, uh, especially, uh, ones that have Google, like the Android, you know, they, they go out and they see street names on the signs, and the Google car will come through and do the, you know, the street view camera, and at the same time map the streets and take any name off those street signs. And the si- street sign has a misspelling on it, and people go to type in their address, and they're, and they won't come up, it's because they, you know, there's maybe a misspelling. A good example is out here on, uh, Monument Avenue. The city put up the, uh, the Clifford C. Sims, uh, Avenue. I think it's, or, I don't know what they call it, it's a, it's a memorial, and if you go to Google, it now says that's the street name instead of Monument Avenue. So if somebody has a one-on-one Monument Avenue address, it's possible it won't come up in the GPS, because Google put it in as Clifford C. Sims, because that's how they see it when they drive it in the field, so.
Well, we can handle the county road, we can go to DOT and see if they could put something on the state roads, primarily on Highway twenty-two. Uh,
If you can.
And then if you can work with us or whatever we can do with this GPS system.
They're coming, they're coming to Cemetery to go. They're coming, they're coming to Cemetery to go with that direction, is what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah. See, when they come in, let's just say out of Panama City, it directs them to turn left on the Kemp Cemetery Road, and it just turns into dirt road.
If I know which unit they're using?
Do what now?
If you can tell me which unit they were using or if...
I don't know. These are people from Alabama, Texas, Louisiana, wherever they're at, coming to visit. And they wind up out in the woods, and we gotta get up and go find them.
I can, I can actually go into, uh, Garmin and TomTom, at least the popular, you know, a couple of popular ones, and let them know that possibility of an error in their, in their map. But I, without knowing which GPS unit they're using, it's hard to, it's hard to submit, 'cause there's so many different ones out there.
That's it. Uh, couple of more issues. First, uh, I wanna commend our maintenance department. See, Mr. Mark sitting back here for, and, uh, going up, and the Honeyville Community Center. I don't think we'll be having any more falls there. They took and completely, uh, removed the portion that was causing the trouble and, uh, put it all where if anybody falls now, it's, it's not the fault of the, uh, uh, terrain there or the ground level. And, uh, Mr. Mark, a really very professional job there, and I want you to know that, and you thank those employees that went up there and done that. Also, uh, on the same, we got started yesterday. Now, we have our, uh, everyone should know this by now, this, uh, Public Works in this county, under the direction of the County Commissioners here, the people asked to, we're running very, very, very thin. And, uh, we have these, we're backlog, uh, I know over in the courthouse here, we're probably a year behind, but, uh, Mr. Mark finally yesterday got up to Mr. Carter's, uh, uh, building that he's using now. And, uh, hopefully, hopefully that we, uh, two men, if they need assistance, we have ways to get them some assistance from the work crews. But hopefully that we can, Mr. Carter, we can get you fixed, and there, there was four phases of it. We're on the third. And I hope that the fourth phase, the third one is probably the, uh, will take quite a bit of money, the fourth phase, the kitchen area. And hopefully we can get it with this, but if not, we gotta come right back with it. But we gotta, never we're through. And, and that's the only other major issue other than the ambulance building, which Mr. Whitfield agreed. It was supposed to be three. Your, your building was number four. He agreed to flip-flop, and he would take the fourth spot and give you the third spot. So, Mr. Mark, if you can, stay with us, and let's get through up there. Then if I have any more major issues, we'll just put them on the list, and when the number comes up, we'll go to work on them. But thank you again. Uh, after the last meeting, or maybe it was a budget meeting, I'm not sure, I guess, Mr. Chair. Uh, I went out in District Two. This to do with mandatory garbage pickup. And I rode the areas, and probably ninety-five percent of the people in District Two have garbage pickup. Uh, again, and it was brought up by Commissioner McLamore and Commissioner Yeager here. I talked to two elderly ladies. They share a can, and if we do this, that's where we can work some provisions in there. Uh, you know, we can have some flexibility there, but they share a can, and probably between the two of them, they won't have one bag of, of, uh, uh, garbage a week. But all in all, in the district there, everyone's pretty much got a can there. I'd, I'd say probably ninety-five percent. I know I rode all through the Kemp Cemetery area, out through the Williamsburg, Highway twenty-two. And then I asked the, the people with Waste Management, they service, uh, the county. We hitchhike uses another service up there, park and sanitation. But, uh, that district is pretty well, just about all that pickup. And bring that to the, to the light, and if we do address this, we do need to make some provisions in there for that. Uh...
That's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I have had, uh, several constituents that stepped to me over the last week concerning this Port Authority. And they was asking that the, uh, Board, the County Board, uh, write a letter in support of the, Port Authority with Governor Scott signing up the bill. Um, I don't have constituents come to me disagree with the helping out of the Port Authority. And I want to come to the Board and ask the Board, two questions on, uh, um, asking them about submitting a letter in support of the Port. I'd just like to hear some recommendations from the Board.
I can give you mine straight, uh, Mr. Chairman. I, I don't believe in bailing out a bank. That's what we'd be doing if we sent a letter to the Governor, asking him, as tax dollars. So I wouldn't support it.
I have anything else for...
Mr. Chairman, let me, I'm in on that if I may. Uh, anybody here from the Port Authority? No one here, okay. Uh...
Now, this is something that I'm bringing up. The Port Authority didn't ask me to bring this up.
I, I know that, but I just, I just asked a question if anyone was here from the Port Authority. There's no one here. Uh, this letter in support, and the Governor ask you, uh, ooh, Governor Scott, wrong Governor. Uh, Governor Scott, uh, been proposed that, uh, the state, uh, set aside, what is it, two million dollars? All right, now they're about four car payments behind, so that'll catch you up to their car payments. And but, uh, what's, and they, he'll send the, Governor Scott will send a check over. It'll go into the bank. The bank put it right in against them, and they're still two car payments behind here. I'm just using that as an example. But, and then how much longer before they're gonna be right back into it? They're gonna be back in right where they're at now. Uh, I would like to see money, and I'd support this if we do something towards you, uh, to go towards dredging. We gotta see something. But we loaned this board and I, and I know everybody knows my feelings on it. We gave them two hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, nothing. We just can't keep, I'm, I'm gonna see some results. I wanna see some results. That port gets ready, when the St. Joe Company gets ready for that port to go, and my feeling, this is just a personal opinion, that's when it'll really go. We have people coming in. I understand this Thursday from the, uh, Colombia, down in Central or South America. I'm not sure where it's, but, uh, to visit this port, but something will get going there. That's what it's gonna take. But to just keep giving up money and, uh, to bail them out, they need to take this car and ride taxi on the side of it and start collecting a little money and get their own self out of trouble. We just can't keep bailing them out, bailing them out, and bailing them out. Because, uh, I'd love to help them anyway, but if they wanna help themselves, not much I can do about it.
Do I have anything else from... Well, the way I see it, when you said help them out, helping Gulf County out. Because right now, all the citizens of Gulf County is feeling the effect from the port not operating. Uh, what it's gonna take to get the port to operate, I, I don't have no answer to that one. But I know just letting it sit there, doing nothing, trying to do nothing. Now, you wanna make sure something don't operate, do nothing. And, uh, and, and I'm sitting right now, you know, right now, we on, I mean, I'm going back to the times when St. Joe had jobs in it. So I got something to look forward to, that I can look in the future to see that, I'm hoping that we can get back to. Because right now, you know, we got that port. The Governor is talking about signing a, uh, a bill to help out with it. Well, some say it's gonna help the, uh, banks out. How much time is that gonna buy the Port Authority to work with the port? That's gonna help us out any kind of way. I'm just, I'm, I'm sitting there really just reaching out for answers from you guys, because, you know, right now, we need some jobs in St. Joe. A lot of the people who are discussing it and talking about it, you know, most of those people got a paycheck coming in.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'll, I'll say, my little piece, I've always supported the port. I think it's a regional project. It's gonna go at some point in the near future. Beings now that St. Joe Company has started working with the Port Authority, there's, there's, it's gonna happen. Uh, I'm like Mr. McDaniel, uh, and when I was in Tallahassee, I talked to Senator Monford about this. We need some dredging money, and, and they put, I, I think there was about one-point-three million in there for some dredging. Start, start that project, uh, with the dredging. I'm in full support of everything that we can do to help that port go, because that's the way you grow, grow jobs, not only in your community, but in the region. And, uh, you know, a- as I've said before, I get calls on a pretty regular basis from inland counties that, that are in full support of this, even from, from, uh, the, the Krypta, as they call it, Capital Regional Transportation. But, you know, they want this thing to go, because they know the impacts that it'll have for Chattahoochee, and the impacts that it'll have for Gadsden Counties, and the impacts it'll have from, for, for Mariana and Jackson County, and all these different counties. So I, I'm in full support of doing what we can. That's why I supported the two hundred thousand to the port, and that's why I'll continue to support the port. I am like Commissioner McDaniel's. You know, it would be, uh, you know, I think it's appropriate for us to send a letter on the one-point-three million on, on, on that. But I, 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 I think it's, at the end of the day, Capital City was the one that was pushing that issue. Uh, they were the one lobbying for that issue, and even I think Mr. Colston, Leonard Colston, the chairman, said in, 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 in the paper that, that, you know, uh, that wasn't their issue, it was Capital City's issue. Now, I'd certainly think they'd take the two million if they wanted it, you know, at the end of the day. But a- at, at the end of the day, I'm in full support of, of the port. But I think at the end of the day, we need to let the Governor make that decision on that particular two million to Capital City Bank.
Um, I just, I spoke with a mission out of Broward County and just listened to them speak on how much port action they got going on down there. You know, it was like, you know, guys, we can share some of this action with y'all. We got so much going on. I just, like I said, I'm just, myself, I'm being on the side of trying to help create jobs and just, not only just hoping that something come out of this good. I'm in support of, of, um, I, from my desk, from the chair desk, I wrote a letter to the Governor, asking him to support it. And I was just asking from this Board. I want to get the feeling from the Board and ask the Board, we send one from the, or the County Commissioners, but now I understand how some of you guys feel about it. It's, it's just that I still, I'm, I'm just saying, if you don't never get out here and get to looking for it, you're not gonna make it happen. And every time you go out for something, it's not gonna work the very first time. It might not work the second time, but that don't mean you give up on it. But we got a port sitting right there. We was blessed with that port, and it's been sitting there. And with the right push, the right people behind it, I'm quite sure that this port can be. I'm, I'm really quite sure that the port can be used, you know. So, um, do I have anything from the, I want to go to the public on this discussion here. Do I have anything from the public to speak on the port?
I think, uh, Christie McElroy, thirteen-eleven Woodward Avenue, Port St. Joe. I have spoken about the port. You know that, Commissioner Smiley. I do think it's the jewel of our crown in, um, in going to the TDC and also talking about boutique cruise lines. So I would love nothing more than to see that to be a working port. I share Commissioner McDaniel's concerns and Commissioner Yeager's concerns about, um, efforts being applied to pay off two million dollars of, is it four or five million dollars that we have?
Or plus.
And not putting those efforts as much behind as far as the citizens go towards the infrastructure of making that channel deeper, deeper than twenty-five feet. It's like having a beautiful house with no bathrooms. You've got to be able to function within that house. And so my opinion from sitting at port meetings is, first of all, we need to have, uh, the chairman, the director, people that are, are in on those meetings, coming before this Board and speaking to what their needs are and what the infrastructure needs to be and what the plan is. I think the last thing that I would want to see is for the citizens of Gulf County disheartened once again. And if you look at the kind of money that has gone towards that port in the last ten years, I think it's pretty close to seventeen million dollars of taxpayer money. I mean, we need to be asking the hard questions and having the people from the Port Authority that sit on that Board and that are being paid by the taxpayers come before us and tell us what the plan is. And in this eleventh hour, you know, get this letter-writing campaign that Senator Monford has asked for, uh, again, is it about the bank or is it about the citizens? And I don't have all the answers, but one way to get the answers is to have good communication. So that's all that I have to share. Again, I've been sitting in on those port meetings. I've been trying to take in information. I care very much about the jobs. I do believe it's gonna be our lifeline, but we need people here to communicate. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the, at this time, public discussions? Anything from the public?
Mr. Chairman, before you go to the public, I just have one issue. I can direct all the Commissioners to page sixty-one in your consent agenda.
Sixty-one.
Yes, please. Ms. Lanier had, um, and I were discussing, and she had given me a resolution. Page sixty-one is a resolution, um, it's a continuation. If you recall, on March twenty-sixth, this Commission voted unanimously to go out to RFQ on a, uh, technical grant, or a technical assistant on your grants for this, uh, small and emerging business development in Gulf County. You voted in March to go out and pursue that through RFQ. Page sixty-one is an extension of that resolution. And then there's an additional resolution to permit the county, in an effort to move this RFQ forward, which has been presented in the last day, to, uh, pursue a grant. It's called a Rural Business Enterprise Grant. Um, and I have it here. Ms. Lanier provided it to me, and I'd like to read it to you all. What this essentially will do is give the county the ability to apply for this grant, so that as you go through this RFQ process, there'll be funds there from the USDA to hopefully pay for some of these services as a consultant. And like I said, you want me to read it by title? Um, I'm gonna, if I may, Mr. Chairman, read it by title. It, and it's an extension of page sixty-one and sixty-two. "It's a resolution of the Gulf County Board of County Commission of Gulf County to authorize the submission of a Rural Business Enterprise Grant. Acronyms RBEG application, and in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars to the United States Department of Agriculture Rural Development, and to accept the RBEG upon said grant being awarded to the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners for the purpose of assisting in the small and emerging business program." Um, you've all initiated this process in March. Um, today, you voted in your consent agenda for the set, next step in the appropriation of that small and emerging business under your consent agenda. And Ms. Lanier now has a resolution that you now, I think, have in front of you that would enable the county to pursue a grant through the USDA to hopefully fund, um, and, and an extension of that. I think the RFQ process is still ongoing. Don't believe the county is engaged in any of this.
RFQ process is pending approval, award of the grant.
Okay. This, this is, this is one piece to the puzzle, I presume, really, to, uh, fund that RFQ.
This, this is one of those items that, as, as the attorney said, we brought up in, in March, and, and we need to pass this resolution. I think Barry is familiar with this grant, and has gotten a few, um, support letters in for this grant and those type of things. So it's a resolution we need to pass, and I'll make the motion to pass the resolution.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager?
Second.
Second by Mr. McDaniel. Have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have anything, Mr. Carter?
He was being a gentleman.
To the Board, I think y'all are aware that we have a, uh, fifth-grade garden project throughout the county, uh, where we, um, we call it from seed to plate, where we, uh, take the fifth-grade kids and we, um, grow a garden. At least they do. They grow a garden, start with a seed, starting in September and going through, uh, May. It's climaxing now. So everything they've grown, since the collards, the cabbages, the must... so is the collard, the cabbage, the mustard, chumps and all that, and they have a big dinner, Mr. Mc, I'm sorry, couldn't get Mr. McLamore to come, Mr. McDaniel, he was last week and we were, and I had a real good time, real good turnout, extremely good program for the kids, we have some of the best participants, I taught school way back in, in the past and these kids are just a pleasure to work with. So we inviting y'all to come today, we in Port St. Joe at elementary school today, starting 11:30, y'all can come by and get you a good old country meal, okay?
There you go, it's good. That's today, right?
If you miss the day, we're gonna do it again, we have 40 kids we wanna feed today and we have 40, it's 80 kids here in Port St. Joe and the other 40 we're gonna feed Thursday.
That's Louise cooking?
That's it.
That's, that's like that meal we ate last year.
That's right, right, so.
Yeah, I see you there.
All that ministry, y'all invited, y'all come by and eat something. Next thing on the list, we always participate in the Tupelo Hunting Festival, and that's Saturday, and we will have a booth in representing county and it'll be educational, we will have voices there, the master gardeners, and also we will have a display of the woods on honey itself, we won't have any live bees, but we have, they will get displayed, so y'all come by and visit with us.
Thank you. Ms. Pat.
Pat Hardman, Coastal Community Association. A rumor going around that the survey out on Beach Can did not find any St. Andrews mice. They didn't find any last time, guys, and we've spent a bunch of money on this habitat conservation plan because they found some tracks that they think are like the Beach and St. Andrew mouse. There was some discussion or some rumor that they might be importing some St. Andrews mouse to our Cape to populate. You know, when we're doing this habitat conservation plan, not only do we not have St. Andrews endangered mice out there now, which is costing the people who are trying to build and develop out there a fortune to prove that you do not have it land by land, but if they're gonna bring endangered species out, isn't this just another avenue of, let's stop construction, let's stop development on the Cape, just like the Cobra was? We need to make sure that they understand, don't bring a mouse that we do not have in residence to our Cape to keep us from building out there. And I would strongly request that some information be made public that they are doing this, are possibly doing this, are considering doing it, or there's a rumor that they might be doing it, and for them not to do it, and I'd appreciate it.
Ms. Pat, I've, I heard that rumor yesterday too, so I've got a call in to Nick Wiley, who is head of the FWC, because that's where the rumor, I understand, came from, was FWC and they're doing a, they're putting traps out there from what we understand, started this weekend, I think, and are trying to see if they can catch any of these beach mouse. And, you know, I mean, it is, it's another layer of bureaucracy that, that certainly we don't, we, we need to prevent from happening and we'll do everything that we can to make sure that that's just a rumor and I, I'll follow up with you once Nick calls me back and, and we'll, we'll see, we'll, we'll, hopefully it's a rumor.
If not, I'll just have to go get more cats from the Humane Society to take care of the mice. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Do we have anything else from the public? Anything else from the public? Can I get a motion to the general? Got a motion by Mr. McLamore, second by Mr. Jaeger.